Coordinate the work of this independent firm with us in order to avoid duplicative expenses. Finally, and most importantly, I'm aware that some creditors and market participants have tried to use the December 18th presentation to argue that the government has enough liquidity for its needs and that it has not been transparent with its liquidity position. This is completely inaccurate. The government and various public corporations face liquidity challenges that need to be addressed in the near term to avoid further serious adverse consequences for the people of Puerto Rico and the economy. While our presentation of bank accounts, balance, account balances group together all governmental funds, including those of central government and major public corporations such as PREPA and PRASA, many of these funds are tied up as a result of ongoing litigation. Some have restricted uses, such as federal funds and debt reserve accounts, and other are entities that are legally separate from the Commonwealth and cannot be readily accessed. Furthermore, in many cases, the available funds are not sufficient for the operational and capital needs of the government, and these public corporations, which have a consolidated budget of expenses that exceeds $25 billion this year. As you are aware, we have taken in recent months a number of extraordinary steps to prolong our liquidity. These measures are unsustainable and, in our view, will not yield much further benefit. Given the decrease in government revenues and extraordinary expenses that the government has had to incur and will need to continue to incur as a result of Hurricane Maria, the liquidity challenges are real and need to be addressed now. Now turning to presentation, to the presentation, please turn. In slide four, the executive summary, in order to prepare the December 18th presentation, AFAF requested, as mentioned before, all government entities, except for municipalities, a list of their bank accounts and their balances. These requests were first sent to government entities and then to various commercial banks. We have excluded from this exercise certain accounts and funds, and I will address them shortly in slide six. The result of all this work has been the preparation of an inventory of 800-plus bank accounts across all governmental entities, except for municipalities, including those outside the scope of the fiscal plans submitted to the board. We have been sharing information, we have been sharing information we have gathered in this process with the board and its advisors, and exercise of this nature was not conducted by prior administrations. As a, as a result of this exercise, AFAF will have centralized access to bank account This next slide shows the five-step process that AFAF, in conjunction with Treasury and the board, is currently implementing in order to evaluate all government accounts. We have designed a five-step process and have completed the first step, which involved the procurement and validation of all government accounts. We will now begin the second step, which requires the engagement of an independent firm to assess the inflows and outflows of these accounts. In this step, as I mentioned previously, we hope to work together with the board and the firm it selects to do a comprehensive forensic analysis in order to prevent any redundancy in work and expenditures. In the third step, our legal advisors will assist us in asserting the restricted, or unrestricted, nature of the funds that are on deposit or flow into various accounts. Once this is done, we will try to identify any excess cash existing in non-TSA government accounts. And finally, what steps would have been, would have to be taken in order for the central government to legally access any excess cash identified? As I mentioned during, in the executive summary, we have excluded certain account information from this presentation. As shown in this slide, we have excluded information from the legislative and judicial branches of the government due to the fact that they constitutionally operate separately from the executive. We have also excluded municipal funds, as they are political subdivisions that operate separately from the central government and are currently covered territorial instrumentalities under PROMESA. This includes the funds of municipalities, of the Municipal Revenue Collection Center, or CRIM, and the Puerto Rico Municipal Finance Agency. GDB was also excluded. As the board is aware, it is insolvent. Its funds aren't available to the central government and is currently in a Title VI process that provides for the disposition of its assets in an orderly manner. Finally, this exercise has been limited to bank accounts and thus has not included any investment accounts of certain instrumentalities, such as the retirement systems, ERS, TRS, and JRS, the State Insurance Fund, and the Automobile Accident Compensation Administration, This slide shows the process that currently exists for the opening of bank accounts. At the central government level, Treasury has various circular letters that govern this process and provide criteria for the opening of bank accounts, depending on whether the account will have federal funds or other funds that have to be maintained in separate accounts, special revenue funds, or whether the funds should be kept in a separate bank account for tracking purposes. The Treasury Department procedure require its approval for the opening of any bank accounts. At the public corporation level, the policies and procedures that exist would be established by the governing body of the public corporation and implemented by its finance department. The central government does not have visibility into this process as there are separate legal entities. However, AFAF, through the five-step process we have undertaken, it is sustaining visibility into the public corporation accounts. In this slide, bank account balances for the government instrumentalities. Here we have a summary of the information that we have gathered as part of this process. Total bank account balances for the central government and instrumentalities were $6.8 billion. This slide shows that the total cash balance in these accounts do not represent resources available to the central government. As we review this slide, we can easily see that amounts shown under COFINA, other restricted Title III accounts, PREPA, PRASA, HGA, UPR, SS, and other public corporations and legally separate entities are not accessible or available to the central government. This means that at least $4.3 billion of the $6.8 billion is not available liquidity to the central government under current conditions. This could change as a result of litigation outcomes, but we're reporting based on current circumstances. Moreover, as the board is aware, some of these public corporations, such as PREPA and PRASA, will need substantial funding from the central government in the near term in the absence of federal funding under CDL loan program. We now turn to a slide that provides further detail on TSA and pension-related accounts. As this slide shows, other than the TSA, for which we are currently publishing weekly updates, the other accounts have clearly defined functions. The TSA sweep accounts receive funds that are transferred, that are then transferred to the TSA and disclosed in our weekly report. The TSA sweep accounts include the account used for receipts from all collection posts or colectorias, the account through which sales tax collections flow, and the account used for agency collections. TSA sweep accounts also include zero-balance accounts used for disbursements of vendor payments, payroll, and pensions. The pension-related accounts contain employee withholding and deposits related to the Pago charges of municipalities and public corporations to cover pension payment obligations. This slide, a central government non-TSA, shows accounts that are attributable to the central government but are not part of the TSA, and total approximately $780 million in the aggregate. All of these accounts serve as a function for funding specific government services. The largest of these accounts is one of Public Housing Administration, which manages federal funds allocated for public housing programs. The second-largest is other Treasury custody accounts, which mostly include accounts of the lotteries and federal funds. Other non-TSA accounts, such as those in the Department of Labor and Human Resources, include accounts with funds allocated for a particular purpose, and certain custody accounts with funds that do not belong to the government, such as Child Support Administration, used for the positive non-custodial parent pension payments. Other accounts include payroll for public safety entities, such as the police and the Turning to COFINA, I will limit my comments to highlighting the approximately $1 billion is currently on deposit at the Bank of New York Mellon as trustee and restricted, and restricted as part of the interpleter proceedings commenced by the Bank of New York Mellon as the trustee of the COFINA bonds. These funds are mainly comprised of amounts deposited for debt service. Slide 12, the restricted accounts subject to Title III proceedings. This slide shows further detail with respect to accounts of the Commonwealth and ERS, which are currently in Title III proceedings under PROMESA. The first account pertains to the ERS and consists mostly of the funds in the prepetition segregated account and the postpetition secured account that were established pursuant to a stipulation entering to the ERS Title III proceeding. The next two items, which are the GO redemption fund and KLABAC accounts, pertain to funds belonging to the government but not currently available. The use of these funds will be determined by the court in the Title III proceeding. This slide pertains to PREPA. This slide provides some further detail on the accounts held by the Puerto Rico Electric Power Authority. The use of these funds will be decided in the separate Title III proceedings for PREPA. PREPA has enacted aggressive cash management strategies to maintain operating capacity and liquidity. As mentioned previously, however, PREPA funds are grossly insufficient, given its urgent and nondiscretionary capital needs to repair damaged infrastructure. This slide provides some further detail on the accounts held by PRASA, or the Puerto Rico Aqueduct Sewer Authority. PRASA, as a public corporation separate from the central government, has its own resources and revenues. Certain of these funds that are currently restricted in use pursuant to process MAT or Master Agreement of Trust, other specific programs, which leaves approximately $26.8 million from the current expense fund available for operational expenses, and an operating reserve of approximately $52 million. As in the case of PREPA, processed funds are also insufficient to cover their urgent capital needs, expenditure needs. This slide provides some further detail on the accounts held by the Highways Transportation Authority, or HTA. Its main operational account has a balance of approximately $68 million as of December 31st, 2017. HTA is currently subject to its own Title III proceeding, and its funds will be used as determined by the court. This slide provides some further detail on the accounts held by SS. SS is a public corporation separate from the central government and receives central government appropriations and federal funds to operate the government health plan. The funds on deposits in its accounts are allocated for specific uses, such as paying premiums to insurance companies that provide services under the health program and are not available to the central government. These funds are used to cover healthcare expenses for over 1.5 million people. This slide provides the balance in the operational accounts of UPR, when you refer Puerto Rico, which amounts to $310 million. As you know, UPR is a public corporation separate from the central government and receives central government appropriations and generates its own revenues. The funds on deposit in its accounts include federal funds allocated for specific uses and are not available to the central government. Slide 18 talks about other public corporations and legally separate entities. This slide provides some further detail on the accounts held by certain public corporations and entities that are legally separate from the central government, which amount to $848 million in the aggregate as of December 31st, 2017. As shown in the table, the largest accounts correspond to the State Insurance Fund Corporation and the Automobile Accident Compensation Administration. Although I won't go into detail as to the accounts for each entity, this slide makes clear that the majority of the funds on deposits in these accounts are allocated for specific purposes. Also, as I mentioned before, the government does not have access to these funds. In closing, I would like to reiterate that we have completed the first step of the five-step process to evaluate the cash position of the government. The next step consists of engaging with, in conjunction with the board and independent firm, to conduct an evaluation of the cash inflows and outflows into all government bank accounts. Since the board intends to hire a firm to conduct our forensic accounting of the bank accounts, we believe it would be productive to coordinate the work of this firm as part of the second step in our five-step process in order to avoid any duplicative expenses. Again, thank you all for the opportunity to participate in this hearing, and we're not available to answer any questions the board may have. Thank you.
Go ahead, Judge.
I just had one basic question. You stated earlier that the investment accounts are not, not included. Do you have a level of confidence that these 800, 800 or so accounts that you identified do not include investment accounts? You know, I understand what you're saying in a sense, it's not intended to, but have you gone through the accounts in such a way that you have confidence that they are not investment accounts?
Sure. I believe that this, this analysis provides only bank accounts, but I will, I don't know if ACN or Treasury wanted to add to that, to that statement.
From the standpoint of the Department of Treasury, on those bank accounts that are under the custody of the Treasury, we don't have investment bank accounts.
Anything else, Judge?
No.
I would like to ask a question, and I would like to thank you all again for being here. So we, I think we can all agree that this is extremely important to foment the transparency that we all aspire in government, and you should be commended for, for the efforts you're doing in that regard. I just have a general question, and whomever would like to answer in your panel. So 800 accounts seems a bit unwieldy. Have you done any analysis in terms of, are they all absolutely necessary? Do, do, what have you learned in the process that you can implement going forward? Is there, have you conducted any best practices analysis as to what, you know, comparable jurisdictions, perhaps up north, that you could compare ourselves with to, so that, you know, going forward, this process is easier for you and for whomever comes after you?
Sure. Great question. You know, again, this, over 800 bank accounts includes not only operational accounts, but also accounts that have to be separated by, by, by a law or by a statute itself. So, you know, for example, debt reserve funds. In terms of best practice, I think, I believe this analysis is the best practice to have complete transparency on the, of the government finances, although it's an ongoing process and also provides, you know, again, improves our, you know, our reporting into a more reliable, consistent, up-to-date reporting. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything else?
Chairman, one of the learnings that we've had is, is how, how this process has taught us about the, the challenges of monitoring cash historically in Puerto Rico, and how when you have over 100 entities, not only agencies, but public corporations, some of them with their separate treasuries and, and with antiquated, sometimes manual processes, cash management overall, and not only visibility, but control can be difficult to attain. But a lot of what we're trying to do is, through our five-step process and a lot of different projects that we're collaborating on, is providing that visibility and that control and, and through our efforts to streamline government, we aspire to do just that, to make things simpler, not only at the agency reorg level, but also on, on simple agency and public corporation treasury management liquidity processes.
So I gather that as, as part of the ongoing plans of the administration to merge agencies under the plan, there'll be, there'll be, you know, parallel arrangements made so that you can have a better control over this issue with regards to across the entire government? There'll be less autonomy, or will it be more centralized?
These are all things that are, that are under consideration as we draft the revised fiscal plan, which we're submitting soon. And at least from, from our point of view, everything is, has been on the table as we, as we look forward to having fewer agencies and a more agile, more transparent process with, with better governance.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to ask a question?
Can you tell us a bit about the process to, to do this analysis? You know, what kinds of systems are you working with? What kinds of information do you have available? What, you know, what does it take to get to this stage?
So I'll briefly talk about the process, and I think my colleagues here could probably add to what I'm saying, but, you know, it's been a continuous work since July. Again, we had to go where the president asked, over 100 agencies, you know, and talk to their agency heads with regards to their bank accounts. They had to then talk to their finance departments or governing boards to, to go through their respective approval process to get that information to us. After that, after receiving X amount of, of accounts for that particular agency, we had to go to the different commercial banks in which those bank accounts are domiciled, not only in Puerto Rico and US, and that bank also had, you know, their approval process. You know, so, so it was a, you know, a long process of due diligence to be able to finalize step, step one in this five-step process, which was to provide a comprehensive, complete inventory of bank accounts. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add in terms of the process?
Also, the Department of Treasury have an active role during this process to get a deep inventory of bank accounts, because we have contacts basically all these agencies and public corporations during the audit process, and we share what is the best practices that every independent treasury does regarding their, their bank accounts. And, and we educate about the importance that we need to be disclosing these, these balances and, and important to be monitoring these balances on a daily basis or a weekly basis at least. And, and every agency and public corporations should have a cash forecast and do some kind of analysis and, and from actual figures and the cash forecast, because that's, that are good practices for, in terms of cash management.
For purposes of doing this analysis, my sense, based on what you're describing and decentralization, is that you don't necessarily pull all the information at the same time. Do you have a sense of whether or not there are kind of double counts in some of the information, to the extent that say, you know, a transfer happened from point A to point B, and it may, depending on when the pulls occur, balances may show up in more than one place? Or is that something that you solved for?
We are, the Department of Treasury follows practices and, and procedures to manage inflows and outflows activities for the TSA on a daily basis. We acknowledge that we don't do the, on a daily basis, the same procedures for, for the rest of the accounts that we have under the custody of the Treasury. At least, we require in a monthly basis that, that the agencies that, that manage their, their independent treasuries have to submit to the Department of Treasury at least a monthly bank reconciliation with the accounting records, and that's the process that basically we, we perform in order to, to assure that all transactions are accounted for.
And then in terms of the scope of, of what we've got, how confident are you that you have the full universe of resources available to Puerto Rico already, and those bank accounts already reflected somewhere? Or, you know, what's, what's your sense of the completeness of the work to date?
Well, you know, you know, up to date, again, we, we believe we have a comprehensive list of bank accounts. You know, obviously, we have excluded some funds and some, and some investment accounts as we have, as I have previously stated, but yeah, we feel confident that we have provided, to our knowledge, that, you know, the, the most, you know, most comprehensive or complete list of bank account balances for the government of Puerto Rico and its instrumentalities.
Can you tell us about kind of this type of effort and how it ties to, to the audit that I think is almost completed for fiscal year 15? And is the work that you're doing here consistent with what one usually does and has externally validated in the course of doing those financial statements?
As part of the audit, Treasury Department sent a letter to all banks here in Puerto Rico to gather all evidence regarding cash bank accounts to establish is completed for primary government and discuss with the auditors some issues regarding impairment in GDB, EDB, and all that stuff. In a yearly basis, this analysis is made.
So basically, on a yearly basis, when you're doing financial statements and when, and when Puerto Rico comes into align, into, into compliance with the standards we've been talking about in terms of best practices, you get to a place where these, this information is not only regularly available, but it's available and audited on an annual basis? This is a technical thing, and if you can follow up, that'd be great, but looking at the report that you just submitted to us last night and the published data from last month, there's two balances, two total balances for the same date, and they don't match. So it'd be helpful to understand the differences for, between the, the report for balances in 11/30, published in December, and the balance that is being represented today for 11/30, because today's is 6943, and the one published last month was 6875, and I can't quite track the difference.
Yeah, I actually know the answer to that question.
Great.
So the, the number disclosed in, in December 18th, the delta between the 694 and 43 is 15 million in revised balances, as they were updated or corrected by entities, and an additional 83 million in new accounts.
Got it.
So I...
Sorry, one more. What's your, what is the plan?
I apologize, just to clarify, the 15 million revised balances is a negative number, just to...
Got it. What's, what's the plan on a going-forward basis to keep, I have two more questions on the, Mr. Chair. This is the first one. One more after that. I heard the cue. So, so the, the first one is, what's your plan on a going-forward basis to keep this information updated and make it publicly available? What's the, you know, what's, what's your vision relative to that process and the cadence of remaining, keeping up with transparency, as we've discussed?
Well, thank you. Again, we, you know, we believe in transparency and, and provide as much as we can information reliable up to date, as we has, as we have published the weekly TSA. We're also, you know, ACN is starting to, to publish the monthly tax collection reports as well. As you may know, we've been sharing with, with you the component units report. They include actual to forecast and, and other, and other statistics. As soon as we believe it's, you know, it's final, we will be able to publish it. We believe that in the next few months, in the, in one or two months, we'll, we'll be able to publish that report as well. And again, and I think as, as more information we, we gathered from these bank account balances, we'll also make it public as we publish today this presentation. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we will be publishing as much as we can to the public.
So, so a cadence of like once a month, for example, as you've done now, is potentially in the ballpark?
I, we believe that, that's, yeah, we could do that.
And I guess, sorry, I'm violating the rule of two questions, because I asked another one.
It's a sub-part.
Yeah, it's a sub-part. Thank you, David. So, sorry, the, the last one is, you mentioned that you're working through understanding the balances and what is restricted and what may be available and what is considered a restriction, et cetera. Can you give us a sense of where you are on that process and what, you know, what we know to date around? know to date around the significance of these funds and how much is available?
Sure. Well, as I've previously stated, there are some funds that are restricted as, you know, or under court supervision or are under Title III proceedings right now. In terms of the, the specific, the specificity on restriction or non-restriction, I think we have to follow the five-step process that we mentioned. We completed the first process, which is the, to provide a complete inventory of those bank accounts. Now, you know, hopefully in collaboration with the board, we will, you know, conduct that forensic accounting with a, with independent firm to be able to, to know where those funds come from and from there to have an idea with, with the help of, of our counsel, you know, to have an idea, you know, whether those funds are restricted or not. So this is an ongoing process and we look forward to working with, with, with the federal oversight board with that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I may, Anna, very quickly to make sure that, that your previous question or, I don't know if it was 19 questions ago, gets answered.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask 19 questions.
So currently banks have instruction to onboard all public accounts to a platform that a FAFF is visibility over. So this process that we at a FAFF has started to, to disclose on, on December 18th, bank accounts and, and the updated version that we're giving you here today is, it is something that, that we are very much interested in, in continuing to, to further refine, develop and, and publicly disclose.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can I, that's just a quick follow-up on that. Does that mean a FAFF will be the only entity that will be able to open and close accounts? And can you say a little bit more about, about that historically? Who, who's had that authority?
Yeah. Peña, Hacienda, I can take that over, but essentially it's, it's generally-
Yes, Hacienda. For central governments, they have to follow the, the procedures that we have established and, and basically we describe during the presentations. What a FAFF role is over here is, is an oversight role. Basically, all the agencies and public corporations has to disclose every accounts for the purpose to, to prepare a consolidated report of bank, of the government bank accounts.
And I think Andrew had a question.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. I, I wanted to associate myself with the chairman's comments of, of thanking you for the, the hard work you've done, the success you've had here and, and the work that obviously is going to continue to be done on, on this important issue. Unlike my colleague, I actually only have two questions. Looking back and looking forward, I mean, looking back, it, it, it is striking that of, of the work you've had to do and things you've had to sort of build up from scratch on this. I'm wondering if any of you know sort of the, the history and, and the background of really who in the government was responsible for tracking these sorts of things? Was there anybody responsible? You know, how, how did things break down? But second, looking forward, it, it seems that, that you've assembled or continue to assemble a, a snapshot of, of the cash position, liquidity position of, of the government at, at the present time. But as you can imagine, people are going to be interested in that in the future. And this follows a little bit on what Ms. Madocentos was saying, but how confident are you that this snapshot you've assembled is actually a system that you can keep running into the future so that you can continually update things as they develop?
Well, I, I can, I can start with, with your, your latter question. You know, in terms of, you know, we feel comfortable, we've been publishing the TSA report. Firstly, TSA comprised probably approximately 90% of the consolidated budget excluding PREPA and PRASA. So it will give you a nice overview, a nice snapshot on, on, on the, on the government's cash flows. So we, you know, we've, we've provided it on a weekly basis and we've complied with that mandate. So in, in, you know, we look forward to not only publishing the TSA on a, on an ongoing basis, but also other reports that we have been working with the board. And as soon as we are in agreement that, that, that we feel comfortable and, and with the data itself, we will provide it and, and to the public, we'll publish it and, and keep our transparency as objective here.
Do, do any of you have any comments on the first question of really how, how did we end up where we are today?
From the standpoint of cash management, what we are trying to achieve is to centralize more the process and, and of, of the best practice for cash management and, and probably uniform that process through, through the, all the governmental entities. What we found when we took the, the office in, in January 2017 is that this process was decentralized that, and that avoid to have a, a good comprehensive report about the inventory of bank accounts. So, so this is a, a ongoing process that, that we are working on and, and basically we want to achieve that.
I actually wanted to add and try to see if I can add to the, to your first question, Andrew. You know, again, you know, you have to put in context that there's over 100 agencies, right, in the central government, some have their own independent treasuries. Then you have, you know, public corporations which are legally separated from the central government and have their own treasuries. And most of these agencies have their own systems, accounting systems. So again, I think the centralization, that's, that's what historically happened and that's probably why these types of reports were, couldn't, I guess, couldn't be constructed. You know, but going forward, I think Pedro mentioned it, you know, with, and with the fiscal plan that we'll be turning in in the next few days, you know, we'll, we'll be focusing on what, you know, on regeneering the government, looking for efficiencies and start to, you know, and start to provide, you know, information, centralized information so it could be more accurate and more up-to-date and, and public to, to all stakeholders. So that kind of answers-
I think this, in a sense, this touches back on a, on a conversation we had in New York a month or so ago about sort of institutional strength and governance. And obviously it's very difficult that you, you all came into office and are sort of left with, or facing a blank slate of having to invent new processes. Obviously you have many, many other things to concern yourself with, but I think building the institutional strength within the government, within the, the civil service and the career staff who are there so that when eventually you pass on power to a new administration, that, that they will inherit the, the work that you've already done. I think that is important to strengthen governance going forward.
So Mr. Biggs, if I may, there, there are two points that, that I would like to address. The first is your question about, about how, essentially why this breaks down? That calls for a lot of speculation. But from, obviously, we have to assume that having no urgent need for cash allows for a lot of decentralization and allows for a lot of custom processes and, and systems and, and ways of doing business. Once there's a very real liquidity crisis, we are forced to look into it and, and it is a problem that we've dealt with since the first day we sworn in. The second part is the institutionalization. That's an interesting point because Jerry and I have been focusing on the last, the last couple of months on, we're building all this, all this knowledge and intelligence about how, how the government cash flows work and, and how these things should be improved over time. And now we're working with our advisors and with our internal team to how do we institutionalize this? That, that has to be the next step. How do we actually work together? Fortunately, we have an outstanding working relationship with the folks at Hacienda. And a lot of what we're working on is we can move on to the component unit reporting because the TSA reporting is something that we're doing so seamlessly together and that the staff, that the permanent staff at Hacienda is already kind of taking. So this is something that, that we are very much focused on and, and we look and, and it's one way we're measuring our internal progress.
Thanks. I'm glad to hear that.
Judge?
Yeah, I, I just had one, one process question. If I understood you correctly, you went to the numerous agencies and asked them to tell you what bank accounts they had and then you went to the banks and got access to the information in the accounts. Did you consider asking the banks to tell you how many government accounts they had? So in other words, if an agency made a mistake and left off an account, was there any effort to go to the institutions themselves to report to you how many government accounts they may have?
We request to, to banks to provide their, their best informations about governmental bank accounts. The responsibility to provide the, the complete information is under the agencies and the public corporations. So although we have the procedures to, to confer and validate what is the information that the agencies are providing to us and we request a third-party confirmation from banks, the responsibility stills at the agency and the public corporations.
Yeah, thank you.
And I also wanted to add, yeah, and yes, you know, we asked those, you know, to add to what this and the colleagues stated earlier, yes, we asked that, that question and we, we asked the banks all the list of all bank accounts per the employer's social security. So that's where we got, you know, how that we reconciled.
Thank you.
Adding back to, to that question, for added purpose, Hacienda sent a blind confirmation to those banks. So they must answer everything to us in order to make sure that we get every bank account from agencies and public corporations.
Following up on Andrew's question around how did we get here? I took Mr. Soto's 19 questions as a challenge, so I'll aim to get to 20 today. I lost count.
You're at 18 already, Anna.
Oh, you're, you're keeping track now?
I think she's at eight. Big mistake from bedroom.
All right. So, you know, all, all joking aside, you men, you know, in, in terms of Andrew's question around how did we get here and your earlier statement that normally when one is doing audit financial statements on time, all of this information is taken into account of that, isn't this issue intimately tied to the delays in the, in completing audit financial statements on a regular basis? And isn't this information normally known, available and externally audited on an annual basis when one's cadence aligns with best practices?
I think that there, right now, there are a lot of technical and legal things that delay the financial statements, not, not related to cash. There are other things that impairment, restatements, a lot of stuff going on at component unit level that are legal separate entities that we don't have control. And if there is a major component unit regarding that, that type of problem, then delay the financial statement of the primary government.
I hear there are a lot of issues that delay the completion of the audits. My question's a different one. If the audits were being done on a regular basis, this information would be regularly available and independently audited?
Yes.
Okay. The, in terms of the question that you just raised around, around kind of control and percentage of resources and accounts that are subject to treasury control, can you give us a sense of order of magnitude of, you know, accounts and, and finances that are under treasury versus as a percentage of total? And have you considered centralization of the treasury function, you know, at least as far as government-wide with potentially some entities remaining outside, but the bulk of it being consolidated to address that issue?
Well, if, if we go to the slide eight from, from the presentations, the first four categories are basically under the custody of the secretary, which is the TSA and the TSA sweep accounts, pension-related accounts and the central government non-TSA. If we added that, it is almost $2.8 billion from the total amount of $6.8 billion. That, that, that is the coverage that is under the-
So that's of the accounts, but as a percentage of spend, as a percentage of the 25 billion roughly, that I think Mr. Portela spoke to?
Yes. When we have the, the activities that go through the TSA's accounts basically are almost 70% of the consolidated budget. If we added to that the 15 component units that, that we are working right now, developing cash forecasts and developing a, a good financial report from, from a standpoint of cash, we want to coverage over the 90% of the consolidated budget excluding PREPA and PRASA.
And then I think on the, you know, the definition of restriction strikes me as one that's going to be very critical to, to this work. There's a big difference between funds that are, you know, legally restricted based on the federal funds that are only available for a particular purpose or things that are subject to, you know, debt covenant versus funds that may have been provided and allocated for a particular purpose. And somebody may consider that restricted because it's not a fully available to shift to something else, but from a liquidity standpoint, it has very different implications. Can you tell us a bit more about how you're thinking about the term restricted and, and how narrow that definition will be for purposes of the analysis now underway relative to what the significance of the balances is in terms of the liquidity?
Sure. And someone please, if you need to add anything else, but again, we're in the middle of the five-step process. We completed the first one. I think a, a vital process or a step is to, to go about and do the forensic accounting of those, of those accounts to, to discover where the funds come from. And from there, do a legal strategy to, to, to define whether those accounts are restricted or not. In terms of their terms of restriction, I think I mentioned earlier, it means, you know, that, that, that those funds have to be restricted by law or some type of statute. So I don't know if anything, anyone else wanted to add, but that's, that's basically our, where restriction comes from. I don't know.
Basically, we, we just want to, to, to complete the, the process that Mr. Portela described and that, that will give us a, a clear view about the information and to be in a position to answer your question.
Granularity on that question is going to be really critical because if something is restricted by, you know, by Commonwealth law for a particular purpose, but the Commonwealth can also modify the law to make it available versus if something is contractually obligated pursuant to something that is not in a position to be modified, those are going to be two very different things. And I think we're going to be interested in really understanding what, when things are being defined as restricted, restricted by what and, you know, and restricted with a restriction that can be modified or not, because that's going to be very related to everything else that we're working through.
I agree with you, Anna, and, and we'll look forward to working with, with the federal oversight board in terms of the definition of that restriction and going and finalizing the five-step process that we discussed earlier.
And then from our colleagues at University of Puerto Rico, your balances stand out as, as sizable in, in light of the size of the budget. Can you, can you talk to us a bit about, about the nature of the balances? You know, what's your sense of what they're for, question of restriction, et cetera?
Right. So from the UPR, we have approximately 309 million point nine as of 12/31st. And that's basically a balance that's been growing from years of austerity measures and other savings that have been done, but it also includes certain restrictions in within. It has donations and certain other endowment funds that are included within that balance.
Order of magnitude?
Excuse me?
Can you give us a sense of the order of magnitude of the things that are restricted and what the nature of those restrictions is versus?
We do have records, but it would require additional time to provide with that, an accurate number.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
So I have a, not a question, but a, an observation that really builds on what Anna was saying a, a few minutes ago regarding restrictions. And it's my, my basic observation since I, I read your presentation. I mean, I think it's, it's very commendable work. I know it's been arduous and it's been difficult to gather all this information, but it's only a beginning of what we really have to get to, which is, you know, what are the available liquid resources of the Commonwealth of Puerto Rico to manage its operations and deal with its obligations? And I think Anna was getting at a, from what for me is the key issue here, which is what is the nature of a restriction? And several observations. First of all, the only entities that I would exclude from the overall analysis of the Commonwealth are entities that are capable of generating their own resources either through rates, PREPA and PRASA, which charge for their services and generate revenues that are independent of Commonwealth action, or entities that are basically relying or to the extent they're relying on federal transfers, for example, federal funds. Anything that is related to a government-created income stream, whether by taxation or, or any other type of fee that is imposed at the Commonwealth level, really is, is, it's got to be viewed in the context of the Commonwealth resources in general. And to the extent that we say- And to the extent that we say it's restricted, the revenue stream is restricted because it is by local law or practice assigned to a particular purpose, I mean, the reality is in an insolvency context, in a bankruptcy context that we're in, where you have a clear priorities of other obligations, including GO debt service under the Constitution, I think you have to set that aside and look at it as available revenues to be put into the calculus of what is available for essential services versus other services and potential debt service. Let me give you an example from the materials you gave. I mean, I saw, for example, in the Puerto Rico Tourism Company, you consider it on page...
It should be page...
I'll tell you where I saw it.
15, no, wait, where is it?
18.
18.
18. You have it as a restricted entity, but, you know, the source of revenues of tourism, and I have obviously nothing on tourism, but this is just an example, it's room tax revenues that are the source of revenues for the tourism company, which are then used for their operations and potentially for other activities such as subsidies or promotional. Well, that's all fine and good in normal operating circumstances, but to the extent it's a Commonwealth-created revenue stream, in a situation of financial distress, you have to consider it as monies that you might have to use for other purposes. Same thing, by the way, with the legislative branch and the judicial branch. The fact that you have agreements to provide X percent of internal revenues for those branches, because you consider them to be, you know, autonomous branches within the Commonwealth, doesn't mean that the source of revenues is not Commonwealth tax revenues that have to be available also, and you have to decide, you know, if you have to, you know, what's really available for those branches in the overall context. So what I'm saying is, I mean, there are no sacred cows in this process. Once you determine what the revenue streams of the Commonwealth are, where they're located, unless there are true third-party restrictions, contractual restrictions, or restrictions that arise out of circumstances outside the control of the Commonwealth, I think you have to include them in the analysis of available resources and liquidity of the Commonwealth, even though it means, in fact, breaking traditional practices of management in the Commonwealth, which in fact have been partly responsible to get us to where we are. These practices that create artificial autonomous boundaries for operations of certain institutions that ultimately are bound by resources that are created from Commonwealth action. Difference, by the way, just to make a difference, municipalities, to the extent their revenues arise from property taxes that they impose, you can consider that separate, but to the extent they rely on subsidies from the Commonwealth government then that are created by Commonwealth taxes, then it's a hybrid situation. So I make these observations as you move to the next stages of the analysis, because I don't think it would be acceptable to us, and certainly not to the market, not to the interested parties, that we exclude, just because of prior practice, some revenue streams from available resources of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Jose, great, I agree with you. Again, this analysis was just to provide an inventory of cash accounts. We're not defining whether they're restricted or not. In terms for tourism, on page 18, we're just providing the bank account balance and where it comes from. You know, certain 50% are composed of room tax revenues and the rest of funds are operational accounts. We have not listed a restricted, we're just providing a list so we can go over the whole process.
No, I understand, that's why I said it was an observation as you move forward. The other observation I would make, and this goes really more to Hacienda, historically, Hacienda and the Puerto Rico government in general has been very flexible in terms of allowing the opening of accounts by agencies which say we need it for flexibility, we need it to be able to manage it, and, you know, we already get a fixed revenue stream from some tax or some particular appropriation, let us run it separately. Well, I mean, I think one of the first rules of an insolvency proceeding is you have to control the cash. You have to identify the cash, you have to control the cash, you have to marshal the resources and be able to tell all the interested parties, beginning with the court, where the money is and who's controlling it. So I think going forward, you know, I don't think you can follow the same rules for allowing opening up of bank accounts by so-called autonomous agencies or special paying agents or whatever. And I think you're going to also have to start by shutting down some of those bank accounts and forcing things to move to a more centralized control. I mean, it is not going to be, make you popular with the government operations all over the central government and its 130 different agencies, but, you know, you are not in a business-as-usual context. You are in a financial distress context where control of the cash is absolutely paramount at all times if you were going to have a reasonable process to restructure the Commonwealth's obligation, so.
Do the agencies currently have the authority to open up, say, if they wanted to open up another account? Is that authority is no longer?
They have to submit a petition to the Department of Treasury and the Department of Treasury.
So they have to seek approval from you prior to?
Yeah, I have to approve that.
Sorry, do you have anything? I have two more before.
Well, I was going to add to some of the comments that have been made from the side of the board. For example, in the case of tourism, which is the one that Jose Ramon brings up, currently under the financial planning that's being done at AFAF and Hacienda, those room taxes are no longer treated as a sacred cow, which was the case beforehand. Regarding going directly to banks for requesting information, at the beginning of the year, there was legislation passed locally that authorized AFAF or Hacienda to go directly to the banks and request for information. We know from reports from past officials that initially they had when they tried to achieve those controls is that banks would say you don't have the legal authority to request that information, even though it was all government entities. And one of the measures that the legislature provided the fiscal oversight entities in Puerto Rico was that new legislation. Regarding controls, there are, I think that everybody, there's a lot of legislation that dates back to probably even before there was a constitution, when you go back to how the past legislatures under the Jones Act would segregate revenue sources to limit the powers of the governor that was appointed by the president. So a lot of the work that's being done from a legislative standpoint is also to streamline most of these laws, and you can see that in the work that was done in Act Number Two of this year, Act Number Five, and in Act Number 26. And also in legislation that's been done, amendments that have been conducted on the Ley de Contabilidad gubernamental, the government accounting law, those amendments also are providing to streamline. I think what, and moving forward, that will provide the legal framework, which was unfortunately unavailable to past administrations, to centralize into some kind of central financial organization the management of these accounts. So it does go, so I think that the work that's being conducted is building up to reach a point where we have central management, where there are more efficient controls on cash balance, on cash accounts, and on visibility, not only to the government officials, but also to third-party stakeholders. And that's part of also some of the questions that you've been, that some of the members of the board have been addressing.
Thank you, Christian. David?
I'm good.
Anna?
So, two more. One...
There's always two more.
I know. They come in pairs, even if the pairs are not directly related. So, one of them is, when you're, you know, when you're looking at the position of an agency and at resource allocation questions on a budgetary basis, do you regularly look at what's an agency's resources in terms of their available accounts and balances and what that tells us about the need for appropriations? And the size of appropriation that is needed?
From the side of the treasury, we don't do that steps.
From the side of AFAF and OMB, is this something that is generally considered?
Can we get back to you?
Yeah, we'll get back to you. Sorry, Anna, was that question more, is our current cash balances used in the budgeting process? Is that more or less a question?
Exactly.
I think that they, to get a more thorough answer on that, we have to understand that the way that accounting and budgeting was conducted by the government changed beginning this year. There were practices where you would have multi-annual accounts at OMB that would roll over, and the effect that had on cash management in the budgeting process is different. I think that OMB can provide to the board further details on how we're going to move forward in the next budget, because that change, although I think it hasn't been discussed publicly, was a very critical change from the current budget versus former budgets.
So on a going-forward basis, and I share this more as a recovering budgeteer versus necessarily in my board capacity, they are related, I think looking at available balances is an important, and the nature of those balances is an important element as you're considering an agency's fiscal position and their ability to withstand reductions and allocations in the context of the reductions that are necessary to balance Puerto Rico's budget. So I would encourage evaluation of cash balances and their import for financial position and for the need for resources is an important element of that process. And then on the question of, again, you know, following up, Mr. Portela on the question, on the conversation that Jose Ramon and I have been engaging with you on relative to restrictions, I think it's also important to note, it's, granularity is going to be key, right? Because not all contractual obligations are obligations that cannot be modified, particularly in the context of Title III. So just getting very specific around when accounts were open, what are the restrictions? Are those restrictions restrictions that are, you know, that are things that can be modified or not, is going to be really critical to getting to the bottom of what does this mean for available resources, availability of resources on a going-forward basis?
Sure. Are there any further questions? Okay, Anna? Two more?
No, that's it?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good day.
Before we introduce the members of our following panel... We'll keep on going. Before we do so, we'd like to recognize the presence of two esteemed members of the Puerto Rico Legislature who are with us, so welcome, thank you very much for being here with us. Now, let's move to the second panel of officials who will be providing testimony. If we could, please ask the former president of the GDB and the former secretary of the Treasury, Melba Acosta Fuego, to step forward. The former secretary of the Treasury, Juan Zaragoza Gomez, and the former director of the OMB, Carlos Rivas Quiñones, to step forward. Welcome, Carlos. Mister, I'd like to ask Mr. Bulgos to swear them in, please. Juan Zaragoza Gomez.
Melba Acosta Fuego.
Carlos Rivas Quiñones.
Luis F. Cruz Batista.
Please, all of you raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear to say the truth, but not say the truth of the question that are going to be asked today by the Financial Oversight Management Board?
I do.
Yes, you do. Thank you. Muchas gracias, thank you very much. Welcome. Do you, do you folks have a presentation or would you like to just start the...
We particularly asked if presentations or any sort of was necessary. They explained that it was more a question and answer, so...
It is precisely that. Would you like to... Would you, for purposes of the record, state the positions that you occupied and for the time that you did so, please? Let's start with secretary.
Secretary of the Treasury from November 17, 2014, till December 31, 2016.
I was Secretary of Treasury from January 2013 up to October 2014, and then President of the GDB from October of 2014 up to July of 2016. And prior to that, I was Director of OMB years back.
I was the Director of the Office of Management and Budget from January 2013 to mid-October 2014.
I was the Director of OMB from December, from October 2014 until December 2016.
Thank you. So as, the purpose, the purpose of this morning's hearings is, you know, essentially to path away forward, lessons learned. So perhaps we could start, we could start there in terms of what, through your years of service, what impacted you, knowing what you know with regards to the government finances, where we could improve, where we could improve going forward, what things that you think are material? It's a general question, you can incorporate it if you have an opening statement or just address it as it were. We're here to wean knowledge from your years of service, for which we're grateful. So if you'd like to begin, Mr. Secretary?
Thank you. Well, I would begin by addressing or answering one of the questions that I think Jose Ramon did to the prior group of, or one of you guys, one of you members did to the prior group of, what we thought about, what were the reasons why we got here? And I think that after two years at Treasury, I think that we got here because of several reasons. Some of them, at the first glance, may not strike you as a strong reason why we're here, but I think that it all began in the early 20th century, when the Puerto Rico government, the size of the Puerto Rico government started increasing, when we started that tendency of adding agencies.
Early 21st century?
Early 20th century.
20th century.
20th century. At that time too, in the 1920s, the Puerto Rico Legislature also began the bad practice of carving out revenue streams, which most of them were taxes, and directing them directly to different agencies. That had two impacts, one from a standpoint of cash flow, and the other one from the standpoint of the budget. Because when you carve out and assign, for an example, today, a today example would be a portion of the automobile taxes that go directly to tourism, that bypasses the budget. So when they go to the budget hearings, they don't have to account for that. Another thing that started creating the environment for where we are today was the fact that in the late 1990s, the Accounting Division of Treasury was decentralized. Before that, the Accounting Division of Treasury had like 250, 300 employees. After that, it began to be decentralized, and we started having a finance director at health, a finance director at the police department, a finance director at the education department. Before that, we didn't have those positions, because everything was centralized at Treasury. So when you start decentralizing, they also give the authority to those... So, when you start decentralizing, they also give the authority to those agencies to add and improve, quote-unquote, their own computer systems. And that's the point when we started having, and I don't know the exact numbers, we started having Oracle 2.0 at Treasury, and Oracle 2.3 at Health, and Oracle 1.7 at Education, because of that decentralization. Another reason is, obviously, that when you have money, enough money flowing in the system, you don't have to look into the detail. When I had the responsibility of closing all the bank accounts, it was early April 2016, of closing all the bank accounts at GDB, I honestly thought we had like 30 or 40 bank accounts. We had 644 accounts at GDB. No one had never had the responsibility or the need to make an inventory of the bank accounts, because there was enough money. We closed 640-something accounts, we opened 120 accounts at Treasury. We found accounts that didn't have any movement in the last 20 years. So, again, you know, we, in my view, we had all these conditions that created the habitat for where we have today. And unorganized growth of the government, of the government, that added to the lack of transparency and obscurity. For me, I was surprised at Treasury that I didn't have the, I remember meeting with the Finance Director at the UPR and telling him that I didn't understand why, if I give them, if Treasury transferred them almost a billion dollars a year, why I was, I didn't have the authority to ask for some level of accountability for that money? And you know what his answer was? He said, "Don't worry, I don't have that authority either with the recintos."
With the campuses.
With the campuses. So, you know, those are the things, type of things that happened throughout the 20th century that added layers and layers of obscurity. And in my view, those are the reasons why we got where we are.
And that is a very fascinating summary of the macro trends that, to great extent, took us to where we are. Melba, do you want to add to that? You saw it from three vantage points, OMB, Treasury, and GDB.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I totally agree with what Saragosa just mentioned, and probably touching a point that you made. In the government of Puerto Rico, there is what they call the fiscal autonomy. And there is, it's an spectrum, basically, coming from the government agencies, that would be, you know, the Department of Education, Department of Health, and then the public corporations, which are the ones that are truly public and independent, like you mentioned, PREPA, PRAS, and the other. And in the middle, there are tons of many other entities that, they have different levels of autonomy. Some of them, they said that they have what they call the sort of propio, their own Treasury. So, the reason why this happens is because, out of respect, I guess, because of a sort of work that the agency does, they have provided this sort of autonomy. There are some, for example, related to culture, that basically, they receive the money from the Treasury Department, and the money is sent like in a trunk. So, you never have visibility of how much money they have. I remember when I was in budget, that was the case. Some of these agencies would come half a year to ask me for additional funds, because they ran out of money. And I said, "How could I confirm that if we cannot see your accounts?" And that is a fight, a fight that has happened all the time. And I do agree that when cash is scarce, I mean, we have to look at more visibility with all those accounts. I agree that what Ms. Batos Santos said, that they are restrictions that are truly restrictions, but there are other restrictions that have been imposed by ourselves, by laws that can be amended. So, I totally agree with that expression. I just, I would like to mention something, you know, since, I guess, the handling of cash during the prior administration changed throughout the four-year process. I mean, it started in a way, when I was Secretary of Treasury, it didn't have the amount of detail that it has now. Basically, Treasury was.
Amount of information.
Information, detail, granularity, basically. Treasury was handling, for example, our treasurer, which, again, a great officer, but the way it was done, it was by bulk amounts, you know? I remember there was an account called Collectores, collecting. So, in that account, there were many, many, many money coming from different sort of account. The same happened with expenses. So, when I was transferring to GDB, I remember that we decided to hire Conway McKenzie, which is right now still the consultant that the government is using. And Conway helped us to provide the granularity that we didn't have, you know, to understand that every single account that goes into a big account, you know, where it's coming and to see, and to have more visibility of everything. So, that was the initial, you know, steps that we took to improve the management of cash. There was a second step that happened during my recollection, 2014, 2015. The US Treasury Department sent some officers, and they basically were meeting with every, all of the members of the financial, the fiscal sector, Treasury, OMB, GDB. And they came at the end with some recommendations. The main recommendation, which is very much, you know, relevant today, is to have a real TSA account. I mean, the account of the secretary now is called TSA, and before it was La Cuenta de Secretario. But the idea was to have a real Treasury single account. If you want to know what that entails, you can go to the site of, for example, International Monetary Funds. There are many, many documents that explain what is it. And I just bring out one that I found yesterday, and it explains, it says, "The TSA can be defined as a unified structure of government bank accounts, enabling consolidation and optimal utilization of government cash resources. The government gets a consolidated view of its cash position at the end of each day." And then, some of the reasons why government should consider that, they said, "First, idle cash balances in bank accounts often fail to earn market-related remuneration. Second, the government, being unaware of these resources, incurs unnecessary borrowing costs on raising funds to cover a perceived cash shortage." And they, it keeps explaining why government should use this. There are some key principles. They said that the government banking arrangement should be unified, with fungibility of all cash resources. They said that no government agency should operate bank accounts outside the oversight of the Treasury. And the TSA should have comprehensive coverage. It should ideally include cash balances of all government entities, both budgetary and extra-budgetary, to ensure full consolidation of government cash resources. So, originally, that was the idea, and that was the suggestion of the Treasury Department, and we started implementing this idea. That's when the name changed from La Cuenta de Secretario to TSA. Certainly, you know, having deposits at GDB helped, because you could, you know, you could see everything in a consolidated way. But also, a TSA doesn't have to be everything in the same bank. You know, you could have, as you know, you know, different accounts and different banks connected, that will provide you the same visibility. And even in the private sector, I imagine you know that, private sector also are doing that. You know, I know a company, which is an European company, which is doing exactly that, with all the subsidiaries in the world. So, they want to know at the end of every day, what will be the cash balance throughout the world. So, this was, while we were trying to move forward. Things happened along the way, certainly, for example, Juan Saragosa was dealing with the clawbacks when that happened, and there was an executive order that put some additional restrictions for the disbursement of monies from the Treasury. And in addition to that, when GDB defaulted and the moratorium act was approved, this is all certainly pre-promesa. There was another executive order that says GDB has to disburse in this way. I mean, it was a very, very strict way to disburse, even we have weekly balances for the amount disbursement that GDB can do. So, again, we got to a point with the development of a TSA, and I understand that right now is a really good time to go back and to consider doing that. I wasn't completely in the prior panel presentation, but my understanding from what I heard is that they're trying to move towards, and I think that's the right way to go.
To finish, before you get there, I do want to go to Mr. Rivas and Mr. Batista. To finish the introductory round and moving on to the other two former OMB Directors, we've been talking cash, but the problem with cash arises from the fact that we were spending more than was budgeted and that it was really available for spending, i.e., we're running a deficit in a jurisdiction where constitutionally we're mandated to have a balanced budget every year. So, I would ask, you know, the two, Mr. Rivas and Mr. Cruz, the other two former OMB Directors, maybe to also add their opening statement, but maybe focus more on why could we repeatedly, year after year, find ourselves running with agencies that were exceeding their budgeted amounts and unable to restrain the budgetary spending, even with constitutional mandates that we stay within budget? So.
Okay. So, as to how we got here, you know, I just, the fragmentation point, I don't want to beat that point to death, but it's such a critical point. You have fragmentation of the origins of funds, and what Saragosa was saying about special revenue offsets, it's not just about cash accounts outside the TSA. It happens related to origins that flow through the TSA, like the lottery, you have tax expenditures, you have dispersments that are offsets against revenue that never get budgeted. So, to the extent that you have all these resource allocation going outside and happening outside the budgeting process, that is going to be a significant problem, both in terms of maintaining expenses under control and of maintaining a orderly control of your cash balances. So, fragmentation of origins, fragmentation of entities, and we've touched that, I mean, you can, there's some entities, like maybe Contralor or Le Fei. I mean, there are entities that you clearly, at some point, have to draw a line and not have the government interfere, but we've taken that with respect to, say, culture agencies, you could even argue, entities can be autonomous, like the Statistics Institute, like the Electoral Commission, that doesn't mean they have to have an independent Treasury in order to be autonomous. So, I think fragmentation at the entity level, and something that was, and I was sitting for the panel, and I think that as you move forward, I think that was a little bit underweight in the previous discussion, was fragmentation in the accounting systems. Because the only thing that's going to differentiate whether some of those monies end up in those outside accounts, or they end up in the TSA, is if they're within the prefas, as Saragosa was saying, within the same version of the accounting system. Because we don't just have one version, we have several versions, right? So, there is a, I compare this to a fog of war, almost, like there's something like a fog, there's some stuff is directly in front of you, and you can see, and you have visibility of it. And let me give you an example. A perfect example is Corrections Department. It's a 400, 500 million dollar budget, their payroll is out of hacienda, all their accounting is out of prefas, and basically, their entire budget is from the General Fund. And as you start to move out, now you get the police. Wait, oh, wait, but the police payroll is not out of hacienda, that's where you saw a fund related to the police. And then you get to education. Well, education is in a different version of prefas. So, all of a sudden, where you're going to try to control the expenses, you're talking about an Excel spreadsheet, meeting between the Budget Director and the CFO of Education to talk about the finances of education. So, as you start to kind of get away from the core, and then you get to the stuff that's like behind you, like the public corporations or PREPA, you can't even see those. So, I would say that fragmentation of the accounting system is absolutely critical. Okay? So, fragmentation, part that. Second, second kind of new element I would add to the discussion is the role of the GDB in all of this, because in the period that I was there, the GDB was still around and it was still a viable or a sort of viable entity, or at the border of being a viable entity. And if you had an agency that perhaps had available resources or liquidity, more likely than not, that money was plowed back into the GDB, so it'd be available to fund the government again through a loan. So, you had this system where, in essence, you know, it's very important from an expense management and visibility point of view, but because you had the GDB, those balances were being plowed back in to fund the government. And so, the role of the GDB and the GDB disappearing is that then one kind of brings forward some of these issues, as Melba was saying, when the accounts were closed, and then this exercise that's going on. So, when you look at the root causes of this, you can't necessarily park GDB as an important element that kind of came out of the equation at some point. So, that's my general kind of feedback with respect to.
Very good.
The liquidity point. I don't know if you want to touch the expense issue, or you want to go to this.
Go ahead, Mr. Cruz, if you want to.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I think the problem is that Puerto Rico has four different accounting systems. It's the same version of Oracle software, but we have four different versions, the same system, but with four different versions. For example, the central government is running in the version 4, 744, 745, something like that. The Department of Health is running in version 8.2 or 8.4, and you have another agency in version 8.5 or 6. And then you have the Department of Education, which represented 20% of the General Fund appropriation, running in the version 9.2. So, the problem is that we have four different accounting systems running at the same time. I know that in the last budget that we prepared in 2015, 2017, there was an appropriation for change, at a new accounting system. I don't know if there is a project in process. And also, and related to the expense control, we did budgetary reserve at OMB. In 2015 or 16, we did a budgetary reserve of $115 million. But that reserve was included in the account at the Treasury Department, the version 7.5. Then you have to move to the Department of Education, that is running in another version, to do the same budgetary reserve, because there's two different systems.
So, otherwise, they wouldn't see the visibility of.
It's a problem of visibility. They have running another system, and you have problem with the interface, and it takes also time for the interface. I'm going to give an example. The Department of Education sent an electronic file to the Department of Treasury with the check.
The payroll.
The payroll, and all the.
Suppliers.
Suppliers. So, then Treasury received a file, electronic file, to prepare a lot of checks. So, there's not, there are no visibility. Also, all administration were focused in the General Funds. But I think that maybe, you can control the General Funds, but also you have problem, situation with the special funds, with a state fund, I'm going to give you another example. The Department of Health, they bill for some services, they receive income, they deposit that amount in the Department of Treasury, at the account of the Department of Treasury. But they expense the money, and they have, if I know, I think the Fund 571, is an income, an account and funding in the Department of Health, that they have another accounting system, but they continue to spend their, they continue to spend money, but they don't have any, Treasury neither OMB has the visibility in a real time to see what is happening. So, it's a visibility problem.
So, it's very difficult, did you want to add something, Mr. Rivas? It's very difficult for OMB to actually police the overspending because of the lack of visibility of the agencies, is what you're saying.
But we're going to need a single accounting system with all the agency in only one system, so you have the information on a real time, so you can, if you make any reserve or. So you can, if you make any reserve or anybody that reserve, you had that reserve at the real time.
With respect to over, which I didn't touch, with respect to overspending, and I'm putting kind of, you know, air quotes on it, I think that you have to, the General Fund is, first, let's separate the General Fund from the rest of the government because you're, it's a 20, you know, mid $20 billion total resource outlay and the General Fund is nine, right? Obviously, that becomes then the center of federal funds and other stuff. So it really is a much bigger share of the operation of the Commonwealth, but, you know, it's not even half the funding. It's actually not that hard to control that obligations stay within the approved amounts within the General Fund. It's actually something that OMB does, and I think it does it reasonably well. Okay? And the reason I think it does it reasonably well is, number one, a lot of these appropriations are basically wire transfers from Treasury. So whatever the amount that gets approved, you're going to have a 12th of that, it's going to get transferred every month. And then the problem, it's not quote unquote "the problem," but the expenses are kind of farmed out to the entity. So until you get the financial statements, hopefully not three years later, and it comes back and you do eliminations and integration, but from the point of view of Treasury or OMB, that spending was according to budget because that's the appropriated amount and that's a large share of the General Fund. Then you get into items like professional services, purchases, transportation, et cetera. And prefas has a reasonably effective control, right, at the point of obligation and at the point of invoicing. So if you have a million dollars for professional services, you're going to be able to obligate a million dollars in contracts and you're going to be able to pay a million dollars in invoices. That is a budget check, old as the system may be, that actually works. Where the General Fund gets into trouble is with payroll. Because the budget check, quote unquote, is turned off. Basically means if you're going to overdraft a payroll account, the system is not going to stop the check from going out. And so it lets that account overdraft because, you know, the employees have to collect and they have to be paid and it's not their fault, quote unquote, that the government doesn't manage, you know, its finances correctly, right? So that budget check is, quote unquote, turned off. And so you have to establish other ways of controlling headcount. And I think that OMB has generally been able to do that. As he was saying, Education sent a payroll file to Treasury. At the very beginning, when I was there, we actually intercepted that file manually. And if positions were not approved, that database would have that employee deleted manually so they would not collect, all right? And so after we started doing that, the processes started to be followed and everything started to run correctly and all of a sudden it became overhired, it became less of a problem. And management also got aligned and got with the program in that sense. So there are ways to control the payroll, is my point, and you have the legal authority to do so. So General Fund, I think, is manageable. It's when you start to go out from that core, when you start to get in trouble. And it's payroll and it's the reformer as well. Other than that, it's revenue shortfalls and how do you adjust to revenue shortfall. I know someone wants to talk about it, but revenue shortfalls is.
Let me, one final question from me, and you can pick it up, I think, more for the former Secretaries of the Treasury. One final question before I give up the microphone to Anna, I mean, to the rest of the board. And that would be, what was the visibility on tax expenditures slash tax credits, which I think is another issue that we lost control of?
Yeah, in fact, I wanted to add a couple of things to the background information I got at the beginning. One of the things that we need is a tax expenditure budget. That's something that we began at Treasury before I left. Every developed country has a tax expenditure budget. We don't have it. We don't have one. Not because we don't know that we need one, because, but instead because we don't want to know the cost of the tax credits and the tax exemptions. Because once we know, we have to act upon them. I began the process for like four months before I left Treasury. I don't know what the current status is. Another thing I want to add to the background is that another factor added to the environment is good old fashioned politics. Politics impacts the continuity of people and the continuity of processes. Treasury has had 20 secretaries in the last 50 years, 20. 20-plus Assistant Secretaries for Accounting, 20-plus Assistant Secretaries for Treasury. Every time a secretary changes, even within the same administration, you will see changes in two, three, four levels of management. There's no organization that can survive that, no organization. Plus the fact that every time an administration leaves, there's no real operational transition. The former guy or lady runs away or is moved to the basement of Treasury or to a collector's office in Culebra where he can die like the Count of Monte Cristo, you know, something like that. But there's no real transition. No one cares. And again, there's no, there's no organization that can survive that. On the budget side, I think, as they were saying, that the Budget Office does a reasonably good job on controlling the expenses. The real problem that I see is that we have been playing games with the revenue estimates for decades, for decades. You know, revenue estimate is a difficult exercise like any estimate, but it's not rocket science. You know, you can do a reasonable job within certain boundaries. But we know that we have been playing games, you know. Why, I made my, we made our original estimate 9.1, then Budget Office would say 9.8. Then we go to local Congress and they tell us, you have to raise those, the revenues without raising taxes. Okay, so let's push here the capture rate of this tax, the capture rate of that tax, let's raise it to 9.4. Now, we need 200,000, 200 million bucks more. And honestly, we have been playing games with that. And that has been going on for decades, knowing that the way we interpreted the Constitution was that the requirement was to submit a balanced budget, not to end, not to achieve a balanced budget.
If I just would like to mention something that Carlos said. I not necessarily am in total agreement with him. I do think that the over-expending is really still a problem aside from the payroll. I mean, and at least my, and I know that the fiscal plan that was developed contains certain buffers to cover expenses from prior years. But that, in my case, was a problem. I mean, for example, as you know, you have fiscal year that run from July to June, but budget not necessarily, they don't talk the same language. So I could have, for example, like it happened to me, I think it was in 2014, we were carrying, you know, our cash flows and we were kind of making it, and suddenly in October, we received an expense from the Treasury, from the Education Department of $300 million out of the blue. So when I called the CFO of the Education Department, I asked her, what is this? I mean, this is not within our cash flows. And what she said is that they ran out of budget for the transportation of kids, you know, the services, back in February. They keep doing the service, but they were not paying. So when the end of the fiscal year happened, when the fiscal year finalized, what agencies they do is that they close their books and they say, okay, I have some surplus in this account and deficit in the other. So they start moving the accounts until they found the total amount to pay to the transportistas. So then at that time, that was by October, they send all the invoices to the Treasury Department. So we received in October of the next fiscal year expenses from the prior fiscal year for $300 million, which were not part of the cash flow that we had. And I remember at some point, I asked my treasurer, at what time did you start paying bills of the current fiscal year? And she told me that it was not until November of that fiscal year, they start paying the current bills. Up to now, she was paying bills from the past. So, I mean, one of the problems that we have is if all the expenses were recorded in prefas, that would certainly help, but that is not the case. And I guess that probably you know that when the year closes, the auditors have to go and ask for all the agencies for the bills that they haven't recorded in prefas. And then suddenly, I mean, again, I don't know if that has changed, hopefully, but that was.
That was always a big problem. And of course, moving expenses from one year to the next fiscal year and leaving it unpaid at the end of the fiscal year is one of the classic issues, I think, that.
But I guess that was closed by law or something. I guess they closed up, you know, that you couldn't use.
That was closed, sorry, that was closed this year, first under Act Number 5 and then under Act 26. And finally, in the consolidated, in the budget that was approved using multi-year appropriations, was closed finally.
But of course, the ultimate limitation or restriction is that the music stopped and you couldn't go to the markets to finance. And that's really what we're seeing. That's what happens when.
But to clarify, we're talking about three different concepts here. I think concept number one is whether the system is effective at stopping obligations in excess of appropriations. I think that's number one, and the system is effective at that. Now, if you book, now, if the agency has a manual process and has, at the last moment, enters a lot of invoices at the end of the fiscal year, that will create an overhang, regardless of whether you have a multi-year appropriation, it will create an overhang relative to the operating resolution, to the, that's only one-year term, but it still creates an overhang because, you know, you obligate, then you get the invoice, then you pay the invoice. So the system is effective at that. Education Department, because it's on a different version of prefas, creates particular challenges related to that functionality being effective, okay? And so it has to be managed, sometimes manually, and I think it is managed, okay? That's not a broader statement of whether the government spends too little or too much. That's not the point that I was clearly making, or that further cuts could be made or further costs should be made. I think that when you have consistent budget deficits, sometimes you have revenue shortfalls and the expense adjustments don't happen, and they don't happen in time or they don't happen early enough, and so you end with a deficit. Sometimes the overdraft hits the payroll accounts. Sometimes it happens on the health reform, which is the other, I think, big risk factor on the General Fund, which is you have more people, you have more medical benefits and more consumption, or maybe the contracts that were negotiated with the insurance agencies came in at higher premiums than you thought. So I think those are the bigger vulnerabilities. And I think we are aligned on that the accounting systems are driving a lot of the visibility and a lot of the management problems that we're talking about.
Yes, I want to add a comment from, mentioned by Melba and Carlos, for the over-expense and the expenses that are basically in the Department of Education at the end of the year. So that's the reason why in 2017, we include in the budget a budgetary reserve of $200 million, because the experience, previous experience, the information that we received from Treasury is that in the audit process, the amount that was over-expensed in the General Fund was $200 million.
I just had one, one question. Do you have an opinion on, if I understood the processes where bills are not getting paid, they're running out of money, so it gets pushed to the next fiscal year? What is the cost impact? In other words, what are vendors then charging? Once this becomes routine, vendors, I presume, would charge higher amounts because it's taking them longer to get paid.
I know that that happened is completely correct. I don't know how much is the increase for the financing. The vendor is financing the government, so they have to add that amount to the cost. But I don't know exactly how much is it.
Yeah, but certainly it's feeling the price. I mean, it's obvious because they know that they're going to collect on time, so we have to assume that it is.
Thank you.
Can you talk about the relationship of decentralization and the relationship of segregation of revenue sources and isolation of those revenue sources and the issuance of the debt? Seems to me there's a relationship, for example, when you separate, say, tobacco settlement funds versus having them be deposited into the General Fund, when you segregate certain revenue sources and they're decentralized, seems that there's a relationship between that and how the debt buildup has occurred over time.
One consultant that we hired when we started the process of considering the restructuring of our debt, I remember that he said something like, I mean, looking at all the amounts of different issuers that Puerto Rico has, that what you're saying, the segregation of revenues, he said, you guys have found out the way of find all the different resources that Puerto Rico has, and you have found the way to basically securitize them. I mean, issue new debt against new revenues. I mean, that's what he felt, because as you said, we have found a way to issue debts against room tax, room tax, tobacco settlement, everything. He told me that he was impressed, I have to say, you know, how complicated this whole issue was. I mean, we're talking about, I don't even remember, 70-something issuers, you know, and even one sort of debt could be so different. You have COFINA, but you have COFINA Senior, COFINA Sub, you have COFINA Caps, you have GDB notes, you have GDB notes with government guarantee. I mean, it was a major, a major problem. In part, that's what, when we were developing the different structures to restructure our debt, we were considering creating, if you remember that time, creating an entity that was going to be the issuer, the only and single issuer of all the debt for Puerto Rico. Actually, we were proposing that that entity would be created by federal law. And basically, you know, if we exchange, as part of the restructuring, if we exchange the notes, then people will be, you know, rendering their current notes and getting one note from that famous issuer. So, I mean, from that issuer, that certainly, the idea was to have one issuer. But I totally agree with you. I mean, I think, yeah, we have found ways to get a new form of source of revenue to issue and to finance debt.
See, I agree. I think that at the beginning, I think there wasn't the intention, you know, early 20th century, when we started carving out those revenue streams. But once we found out that it allowed us to create the mirage that we had the borrowing capacity, things went downhill.
The super bond, was it any of that structure that I mentioned?
I think the current administration probably doesn't talk about the role of the IT systems anymore after our follow-up discussion in New York. And part of it is because, you know, I come from a state where there is a decentralized IT system, they're moving in the direction of centralization and there are budgetary controls. And just as a, by way of anecdote, one of the things that happens is that when you're a department director, if you, if you create an obligation in excess of your, of the appropriation authority that has been provided, it's a personal liability situation. And it's statutorily a personal liability situation, and it has big implications on the extent to which you, take it a little differently when the vendor can come after your personal resources for far greater amounts than what personal resources one has. Anyway, so there are a variety of different approaches to ensure that budget discipline is adhered to, and definitely a single IT system makes it easier, but it's not the only approach to have effective controls, just as a, you know, kind of as a comment. The government was talking about a variety of, about just the effort that it's taken to go in this direction. And you've talked a bit about the impact of the changes in, and the default in GDB and the movement of funds away from GDB to private banks. Can you talk a bit more about kind of what you see as some of the role of the change in GDB and what's happened in terms of the, you know, the lack of transparency and the decentralization of where Puerto Rico's resources are? Whoever of you would like to address it, probably Melba more of a.
Well, as I said before, I mean, certainly having GDB as the bank of the government was helpful because, I mean, even though there was a law that was approved, basically telling agencies that they have to deposit in GDB with exclusion of, again, some of the ones that you saw, you know, judiciary branch, municipalities and so forth. I mean, it certainly helped having one central bank. We lost that certainly when the Treasury Department decided to take out their accounts and other entities also. So now we're back to a bit where we started. So now we're back to a bit where we started. But this is something that is not new. I mean, I was budget director back in 2001, and it happened the same. When we came in, all the agencies were deposited outside of GDB. So I remember a meeting where, you know, the governor told the head of agencies, you know, GDB is the bank, you know, you should bring your deposits to GDB. So certainly having GDB helped, you know, in that process. I mean, but, but again, I mean, it still can be done. I mean, still, now the TSA account is in a private bank, and other entities have accounts in different banks. I mean, you can find a way once, as you mentioned, once, you know, if there is a certain restriction, if there is not, or if it can be changed by law, you can start connecting the accounts. You know, it doesn't have to be even with the same account, the same bank. You know, there is the possibility, the mechanics are there. So you can, you can understand what is the cash balance of the whole government on a daily basis, you know, how much the government ends every day. So as I was explaining, that was the purpose behind the original idea of TSA. But certainly, yeah, not having GDB as the main bank didn't make it easier.
I'm sorry, I have a question regarding, something that's been coming up over and over, and I think that we agree on this, so this is kind of a question, but it's also advice to us. Certainly, we agree that having disparate versions of Prefas around the government causes a huge issue because they can't speak to each other in some agencies. The version they have is no longer, it doesn't receive maintenance from the actual software developer anymore, so everything is in-house. And we identify that in, as one of the critical steps moving forward, in addition to other measures that maybe Anna would agree to regarding personal liability, et cetera. My question would be, the authority that we required for that has actually, has been existing, it's on the books, the legal authority required to do that update was on the books, I believe in 2006, there was a reform law that had that authority. The authority has been in the, in la Ley de Contabilidad Gubernamental. What stopped, or what was the impediment for you over the past few years to actually do that update? Because I think everybody agrees, and it's a, it's a problem that is identified quickly once you're a bit, a month within a new administration. What was the roadblock that you faced in doing that update? It's a 24-month process that needs to start out, so what was that roadblock that didn't let you do that?
Before we talk about the roadblock, let me explain what happened. I mean, my observation is that prior to us, all the agencies have this, were in the Treasury Department under the same Prefas, because supposedly, some sort of requirements of federal agencies, particularly Education Department, they had to change for the Prefas version, higher one. But the problem is that it was only a change in agencies, in education, in health, in certain agencies. So they have a better version or a more updated version than the one that Treasury kept. So when you look at the budget of those agencies, those agencies, my recollection was that the number was close to 70% of the whole budget were in separate systems. So when we came in, at least when I was in Treasury, we asked for proposals for various entities. When, when I left, basically, we have analyzed same company that has the system with another version, different companies, and we have the recommendation of the particular company that, actually, the agreement was ready to be signed. But then I was leaving Treasury, one was entering Treasury. So I let one to be the one, basically, to finalize the process. So at least in the second year, we had an idea, what was the best system after all the analysis of IT people and that. So after I left, then one was the one who...
And then we executed the contract with Microsoft, six, seven months before we left, to start the transition to a new system.
What happened with the one before that? So when, so what you're saying is you came in in 2013?
Me, 2014.
No, you do the analysis, you locate that Prefas in certain agencies was a higher level because it probably had to do with the update to CFR Part 200 that required certain controls in financial accounting of federal funds. And then to, after that, we do a, you do the analysis, and then the contract is signed with Microsoft in, and then they start doing the process? Because when we came in, I think I can tell you that that update of the integrated accounting system had commenced. So that's what, that's always the doubt we've had. What was the roadblock during those four years that didn't let the accounting systems integrate?
Well, during the first two years that Melba was there, they were...
We selected, we selected then the system after request of, so that happened. I mean, certainly, we didn't start it in January of 2013, probably in 2013, late, and then we did all the process, and when I left, the system was selected. Again, according to all the internal people and, you know, our consultants and that. That's where I left. So then, I guess, one was in charge of signing and implementing the agreement.
Okay.
I don't know the other internal problems they had.
Okay. So I think it was, ultimately, it ended up being an implementation issue going forward that the contract was signed, but it just didn't, it stopped, and we would imagine changing transition or something like that?
Yeah, probably, because when I left, it was running, the process was running. I left two significant software projects running. One, the accounting software, and the other one was the one related to internal revenue system.
Okay. And regarding integrating with other, and that was the tool that was going to be used to integrate with the other, the Educación, Salud, those?
No, not the two, the accounting one. The internal revenue was more of...
Prefas was...
The internal revenue was more of an internal one. We integrate the different tax revenues, revenue streams we had at Treasury.
Okay.
There were, there were other systems that were also in the process of being implemented. Again, I don't know what happened, but I remember there was a system to put under one system all the imports of Puerto Rico, Aseco, I think it was the name. Basically, Puerto Rico, everything that Puerto Rico imports, it's in different systems. So we try, we actually, this is a system developed, I think it was by the United Nations. We bought the system, and it was in the process of being implemented. Again, I don't know the status of that. I left, you know, the process high, and I'm running, I don't know what happened.
No, and when I left, it was in place already.
It was in place already, okay.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for your testimony here today, and thank you for your time availability. This has been very valuable and helpful, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I would like to turn to our executive director, Mr. Esco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all who presented and answered so many questions today. We learned a great deal about the government's cash management and bank account practices as they exist today and as they developed historically. And the public hearing has raised many good questions about the practices that we will be exploring further as we work on these issues. One way we will do this work is with the help of a forensic analysis firm. We've previously announced an RFP for a forensic analysis firm to compile a comprehensive inventory of all government accounts, cash equivalents, and investments, along with their respective account balances or market value. This forensic analysis team will help the board to understand the sources and the intended uses of the funds, timelines for creation of the existing accounts, and any documented legal restrictions and the nature of those restrictions. The forensic analysis team's findings will be made public, and we will make a formal announcement regarding the forensic analysis team very soon. Finally, I would like to note that improved reporting, management, and controls around cash is one piece of the larger public finance puzzle that must be solved to restore transparency and accountability to the finances of the government of Puerto Rico. The government has much work to do in improving its budgeting practices, audit processes, and financial reporting. The board will continue to work with the government to address these issues so that the Commonwealth can be on the path to economic recovery, regain access to credit markets, and restructure its immense debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Since we do not have any other matters to cover, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
I would like to ask for a voice vote. Those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. All of the members having voted in favor, the meeting is now adjourned at 11:15 a.m. Thank you very much for everyone that was here today.